Shane A. Barnes, fifth ward.
And Robert O'Connor, ward six.
Marty Malloy, ward seven.
All right, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, the board just came up from executive session, which was handled downstairs before the meeting. You can open up the floor for public comment, but it does not look like anyone over the age of eighteen is here. That Nintendo is a great thing. Next solicitor's report, do you have anything that we need to address that's not in the agenda? Engineers' report, anything that's not in the agenda?
The only thing I do want to mention is we had a sanitary sewer incident, overflow incident over on, behind Putnam Boulevard, Plymouth Court condos. There was a private property issue, but it was DEP was involved and they're in the process of cleaning it up right now.
And so does the township have any responsibility in that or we're just?
Just, no, we do not. We'll follow up as part of the MS four discharge issue. But other than that, it's being cleaned and handled by the condominium association.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Next, we can go to our first agenda item, which is the government relations report with Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, President McKenzie. Five items on the are on my agenda today. The first of which is the local share assistance grant. You might recall, we've discussed this, I think, the last two meetings. We'll need to pass a resolution to apply for this grant program. And as noted in a previous meeting, the grant's extremely broad and can be used for essentially anything. In our prior meeting, we had discussed adding an elevator to the township building as part of some ADA improvements, along with some possible lobby improvements that would be kind of associated with that elevator installation. Other ideas have included solar panels for the township building, as well as work that would be needed for the highway garage. The grant maximum is a million dollars, there's no match. Now, in talking to.
Do we need to, to interrupt, do we need to move on this tonight or do we have some time on this?
We would need to move on tonight because the grant is due March fifteenth.
Right. And my understanding is we would authorize a grant application of up to a million dollars or something to that language. And then we'd kind of, before the final grant application is submitted, we would kind of finalize our specific, I guess, estimates for what we want.
Assuming Solster Scott's okay with that, I think, because the grant maximum is a million dollars and there's no match associated with the max, or with the match. I think it would make sense to put in for, at least here for the resolution, up to a million dollars. Then, once we have the estimates, what it will actually cost, then put that in as the estimate.
The only reason I ask about that is because I have been talking to our state representative and I understand that there's actually, even though this is a state program, it's the gaming fund, there's like a county board that helps make decisions. So I just wanted to better understand, because I think Dave was concerned that maybe we're more competitive if we pick one project. But I just wanted to see if there's information to be had that we try to get that. So I don't know if it sounds like we can authorize this and then provide the details later. I don't know, what do you think, Dave?
That was my understanding from what Dave said, is we authorize up to a million and then we kind of finalize the details over the next few days. You know, the straw poll, kind of at the last meeting, it seemed like there was a biggest appetite for ADA improvements. Certainly, that would include an elevator, but potentially some work on the floor here to include ramps up to the elevated sections, some work in the lobby to kind of, you know, give the elevator a clean look and kind of renovate that area. Kind of, you know, all under the auspices of ADA improvements. And my understanding, you know, based on the last conversation we had, is there's not a whole lot of other kind of grant funding mechanisms for ADA improvements. And so that's why we were motivated to have this be the particular target of this kind of extremely open-ended grant. I know there's been some conversation about solar panels. You know, I have to imagine there's going to be some other grant opportunities that could potentially assist with kind of green energy alternatives.
The thought I had is to maybe, if it's still competitive for this grant, is to include the work that needs to be done at the Public Works yard, because it sounds like, Charles can probably speak to this a little bit more, but it sounds like that's actually a serious concern that needs to be dealt with a little bit more immediately at the Public Works for us. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so if possible, it sounds like maybe we should put in for the ADA improvements here and the work at Public Works, and that's going to get us probably up to a million. You know, solar panels sound great, but we have like, it sounds like a pretty serious situation over there.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, and we can certainly talk about that more later in the meeting. Does anyone else have any comments on what they'd like to kind of include in the auspices of this grant? But I'm fine with the ADA improvements here in the garage. Okay. All right, then, so I'll read the authorized official resolution. Be it resolved at the township of Nether Providence of Delaware County. Hereby request statewide local share assessment grant of up to a million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for ADA improvements at the municipal building, as well as, I want to say garage improvements. Right, garage improvements. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate President Commissioner Kate McKenzie and Dave Grady Township Manager as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. I'm not going to read through the rest of the legalese, does that sound like enough of an authorization? Okay, thank you. All right, so that's item one. Item two is county aid. So the liquid fuels resolution amendment, each year, just for background information, we generally receive aid from county for road programs. The figure has been about eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the last several years. We were aware that the county would likely be reducing this aid and we thought that they, or I guess we budgeted for a reduction down to thirteen thousand dollars. They did reduce the aid, but not to that degree. So they reduced it only down to just over fifteen thousand dollars. So it's a little bit extra money that we have for that program that we didn't anticipate having. So two thousand dollars in our favor, just informational. The next are two letters regarding the.
We should, Bob, we're amending a prior resolution, but I think they should. Yeah, I think so, just to be safe, I would make a motion to adopt the amended.
So what's the language in that?
So this would be a, if you can.
We resolve, or a resolution authorizing an application to the Delaware County Council for an allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in 2022 for the municipal roadway street improvement program of 2022 in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Any opposed vote by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, the motion passes seven zero. And I realize I never actually held a vote for the first item, so we should probably go back and do that. The, regarding the, if you go back and play the tape, I read the whole resolution, but never actually called for a vote. So let's do that. So I also go back, the resolution is previously noted, any comments or questions? Yeah, I think I need a second for both. A little rusty, thank you, Marty. No, I'm not going to read it again. All those in favor, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Any opposed vote by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, the motion passes seven zero. We at least caught it before we got halfway through the meeting this time, thank you. All right, item number three. Some letters regarding the Delcora five thirty-seven plan. If you recall, there have been several plans, or I should say several plans that we've had to comment on to be considered. One was kind of regarding general acquisition by Aqua of Delcora. The other was a plan that was kind of separated out of kind of improvements done by Delcora. Marty and I put together drafts, kind of commenting on both of these. And then thanks to President McKenzie for kind of reviewing them, providing some substantial and high-quality edits. The letters, as kind of finalized by President McKenzie, are here for our review. Before we decide to vote on them, we can review the text and decide if any kind of spot edits would like to be made. I open the floor, if anyone has any thoughts on the language.
Yeah, how do people, so I know Marty and Max took the lead on drafting this and then I provided some edits. I wanted to make sure they were all right with those before I circulated to everybody and then realized it got a little bit late. And so some people probably haven't seen this at all, and I don't know how you feel about running through it, or do people want to take time and read it and then go through it at the next meeting? I don't know, I think specifically Micah, Robert and Shayna probably haven't seen this, so I don't know how you.
My name's misspelled on one of them.
Can you scroll all the way up again real quick? Just.
Yeah. So I guess the question is for people that are seeing this for the first time. As you're reviewing this language, do you feel comfortable voting on it tonight, or does anyone want to take more time with it?
No concerns or comments.
It sounds like Robert too, okay. Shayna, what do you think?
I'm okay.
Okay.
So I move that the letter titled draft letter added to yes to five thirty-seven plan as just reviewed by the Board of Commissioners be adopted and sent to Delaware County Council as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Popular letter, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed vote by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, motion passes seven zero. And let's take a look at the second letter. So this one is titled Delcora Aqua sale letter. And this is in regards more generally to the plan for Delcora to be sold to Aqua, rather than the kind of specific, you know, technical concerns for infrastructure improvement. And so Marty and I, again, took a swing at this and thank you to Kate for reviewing it at length. And, you know, providing kind of further clarifying language and consideration.
Yeah, I think this really, the specificity that was, that's in this revised letter is good and it speaks to what our planning commission really had reservations about. And we talked a lot about that. It is a very complicated process due to a lot of questions that existed within the five-three-seven plan as presented. I think it's, I just want a second, Commissioner Cooper, on that. The revisions are fantastic, because it really added the kind of specificity that I think this board should put forth. And one other note, this is, if anyone is uncomfortable signing this, this is something that we previously have said, that if you're comfortable signing it, we can put your signature. It'll be more powerful if it comes from all this, obviously, but we don't want to make anyone feel as though they have to put their name to it.
Yeah.
So just feel comfortable saying, no.
And I think that the bottom line of this letter is that the sale to Aqua doesn't necessarily make sense for our township residents and provides reasons for that. Very specific reasons.
Would we like a comma after to county council on the very first line? Whatever your preferred punctuation is, I think there needs to be some symbol there.
Where is this?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think it is a colon.
Actually, it was drilled into me from my time in the military service, that's just like. All right, so it doesn't sound like anyone has any comments on it outside of a comma, colon, semicolon for that first line. So all those in favor, or I should say, I move that we adopt the letter titled Delcora Aqua sale letter as just reviewed with edits as just described in front of us. Does anyone, do I have a second? Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please vote by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, the letter passes seven zero. All right, on to my next item. Okay, so this is item D. So we've discussed this, I think, at a few of our previous meetings, the East Coast Greenways connection with Eddie Stone. So Eddie Stone's doing a feasibility study to create a trail extension for the East Coast Greenway. This is a trail that connects Philadelphia, as well as the rest of the East Coast, Florida to Maine, several hundred miles of trail. Townshipers preparing our own feasibility study in conjunction with Swathmore Borough to potentially connect the Leapers Medley Trail via southern extension into this. So there was a date, I forget if it passed or if it's upcoming, Dave, do you recall? But they had called for public comment on their feasibility.
I think they were just holding a public meeting on the seventh, I believe it was. But I don't think that would necessarily be the end of public comment. I think that was just an opportunity for the public to see.
Right.
Their feasibility plan.
And so Eddie Stone is, you know, a potential landing spot for our southern extension to connect into. And so what I was thinking would be, we could authorize Dave to write to Eddie Stone Borough and see if there could be coordination between their feasibility study and our feasibility study, just to make sure it all links up correctly. So I, you know, open it up to any comments or concerns that people have. Don't hear any, so I'll make that motion. So I move that we authorize Dave to write a letter informing Eddie Stone Borough of our feasibility projects and requesting that we coordinate our feasibility projects if possible. Any comments or, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye, any opposed vote by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, the motion passes seven zero. And the last item is just a comprehensive planning update. So Matt and I have been attending basically every week. I think there was one cancellation and I missed another meeting due to work. But essentially, it's been a small working group. Right now, we're really just reviewing the previous documents, striking mentions of other municipalities to make it kind of specific to another Providence. It turns out the geology and our history hasn't changed in the last ten years. So, you know, those sections are basically being carried forward. Next steps are to identify other interests and stakeholders and include them in the conversation as it develops. Matt, you've been there as well, do you have any other kind of comments?
No, we're just, you know, we're going to try to eventually loop in some other potential stakeholders, like the school district. But as Max said, we're really just trying to edit down right now the old document, which was a multi-municipal plan.
All right, and that's the end of my section, turn it back to you, President McKenzie.
Thanks, on to Parks and Open Space with Commissioner Garson.
Thank you, President McKenzie. The first item on my agenda is a proposal I received from a resident, a local resident, about the potential to create a temporary mini golf setup at Ghulie Park, the former Summit School. No, no real action to be taken right now. I don't have a lot of details, I did ask the resident to give me some information. He's looking for about a quarter acre of space. They'd have to figure out a way to get in electricity. The, depending on where you would site it, they'd like it to be adjacent to a parking area. It does raise a lot of questions, it is an interesting idea. I think if there was consensus among the board members of interest, my recommendation would then be to send the resident to the Parks Commission to try to develop this further. You know, I know we have a lot on our plate right now with our parks. We anticipate hopefully the playground going in soon at Ghulie. So I don't know how this would potentially interfere with that, or not interfere with it. The resident was looking to do something, again, temporary, so over the summer. It is a residential neighborhood, so there are some considerations. So I'll stop talking, open it up to the board.
I thought it was interesting enough to have the Parks Commission consider it before we, you know, there's a lot that goes into it and I'm not sure, it makes, you know, it's the perfect fit, but I feel like it's at least worth considering and talking to the neighbors around there. Certainly, if they don't like it, it's not, wouldn't be something that I think we should pursue, but if they perhaps love it, it could be a fun summer thing.
Bob, if this is something that was workable, could the township enter into a lease with this person for X dollars a month, so that they'd have the land? We could do that and then we could.
Yeah, you could also fill a license. I mean, if you don't want to make a long-term commitment, you could do a short-term license agreement where.
Is this the kind of thing you have to bid out to allow other people the opportunity? Okay.
No, no. What if you're selling it?
With our existing insurances, give or take, I'm not going to hold you to it without having looked at it for real. Would we have to worry about some kid hauls off and knocks a kid across the head and all of a sudden, you know, we're held liable in some way?
I doubt it.
He'd have to have insurance, that would be.
Well, first of all, you're already insured for all the parks. I mean, you know, any township property that kids play on can result in claims. This is, be more kids, there's a risk that more, you know, more kids, more.
Weapons in their hands.
But it's not, it's not like it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's not inherently dangerous activity. Swathmore is, you know, experimenting with a, just a one-day skateboard park with, you know, tunnels and what do you call it? I forget what the words are, you know what I mean? This is a whole lot less dangerous than that.
Okay.
So I would not let that, you know.
Get in the way.
Yeah.
I'm always fine getting more information if you think that they could, you know, provide substantive comment. I guess my general thought is I'd be worried about it interfering with the kind of construction that we already have planned. And generally, when I think about mini golf, I think they look great if carefully kind of maintained, but if they're not well-maintained, they have a way of kind of falling apart and looking kind of poor. So I would just want to make sure we, you know, kind of take the overall kind of aesthetic of the park into consideration.
Absolutely. So, I mean, if anyone else wants to add anything.
For profit.
This is just to let the Parks Commission even consider it, this is definitely not any sort of approval.
So, if everyone's okay with it, I can reach out to the Parks Commission, tell this resident to go to the next Parks Commission meeting. There are a number of people on the Parks Commission who live in close proximity to Summit, so take your time and then we'll see what happens.
Hey, Matt, just one thing, Bob and I were speaking for a second and I think Bob asked a question if the idea was for this to be, would they be charging for this, and we assume that they would. Like, this would be a business.
Yes, I think so.
And how permanent is, are the, what they're installing? Is it something they just lay down on grass, or is it?
It sounds like something that they would lay down on grass and temporary is what he's calling it.
Yeah.
And he understands that, you know, we're kind of, we're creating a park over there, so that has to be temporary.
If there's a profit motive, Dave brought up a good point that the RACP grant conditions, we should look at to see if it complies with that, you know.
I don't think that there would be any issues with it, because the RACP is the redevelopment assistance capital program. I think in a lot of, not in this particular case, but in a lot of cases, the RACP grants are used for redevelopment, which has an economic component to it, so.
We did record a declaration of restrictive covenants on that property.
That.
Was that DC, DCNR money?
That was DCNR money and that was on a different part of the property. So as long as they're not, as long as they're not putting it on the soccer field or kind of in the rear of the property near the floodplain, I don't think that that should come into play. But even like you said, it is still recreational, but yeah.
Just make sure we're not running afoul of any grant programs. And I think that if you've got a a profit motive, you could find that they're doing advertising that the neighbors would find more objectionable, you know.
Agreed.
So I think there's, there's a whole lot more you need to learn about it, I think.
I think there's a good chance the neighbors need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Give me the opportunity to discuss with them, right?
Yeah, a lot would have to be worked out. Why don't we let them talk to the Parks Commission and just go from there? And if you could look into the RACP restriction, if any, that'd be helpful. All right, so moving on, more with Ghulie Park. So we've talked about two playground options for Ghulie Park. The Parks Commission's been looking at both options and the Parks Commission wanted to solicit some feedback from the community about the two potential playgrounds. So the Parks Commission is encouraging residents to attend the virtual Parks Commission meeting on Monday, March fourteen. The information for that meeting will be posted on the township's website. All right, moving on, Houston Park. Nether United Soccer has asked if they can begin obtaining sponsorships to reduce the cost of playing in the program. And in order to do that, they'd like to put up some signs along the soccer field at Houston Park. The signs would be approximately six foot. The signs would be approximately six foot banners on stakes in the ground or along fences, similar to what baseball has. Baseball has some signs along the fences at the field over there. And soccer has said that the banners can easily be removed if it turns out they're detracting from the appearance of the park. They're looking for permission from us to do this. I have some thoughts, but I'll open it up to everybody else first.
I thought it sounded all right. I mean, if they're, they're going to be temporary and, you know, good for them for trying to reduce the cost of it. I didn't have a big objection.
Yeah. I agree. I'm wondering though, if we wanted to go down this road, if we want to have a quick agreement written up with soccer, because I, I just don't want to have a permanent structure and then it's there and then they say, we don't have an agreement and set a negative precedent.
If we're signing an agreement, do we need to treat it like the lights and have an agreement with the neighbors as well? Or is it not as intrusive that it requires that?
It's not really. Property.
I think you just want to be a little, I agree with you on the agreement a hundred percent. I think that's very important because there was that destroyed shed in the corner for forever and it looked awful and there was no, anyway. I would want to be a little bit clear on the limitations on where those signs could go.
Absolutely.
Right. That would be really important because parts of Houston Park need to, like the trail down below, things like that, like that needs to stay pristine, et cetera. Yeah. And I don't think that they would get anything from that, but I just, I want to make it obvious that they don't get to put signage at the front and, you know, over the township sign and all, you know, just.
Absolutely.
We don't put limitations, silly things can happen.
So. Dave, do you think you could talk to soccer and say, um, there is some interest, we'd like to have a written agreement? We'd like to maybe see, um, could be a very rough sketch of, of kind of what the sign would look like and also locations?
They did not have a sense of exactly what they would look like. He sort of, before pursuing the sponsorships, he wanted to see if the township would be interested in having it. And if, if there was interest, he was then going to pursue it and then he would give us more information as, as he gets it.
And then how many? That, I don't want to see a hundred.
Well, that was the question I had. His question back was, how many would the township allow? He, he said it would not be an excessive number. You know, he was maybe thinking something like six, but it could, depending, he, he said, he hopes he has the problem where there would be too many signs because that would be a lot of sponsorships. But they sort of wanted to see what the board was willing to allow before figuring out how many they would get. I think it starts with the agreement. Start with the agreement and then in the agreement, we can have some things placed in there and talk that through a little bit.
Yeah. And I'm happy to task myself and maybe you Dave to have a meeting with the soccer representative to work these things out.
Yeah, why don't you just do that and tell them, because I know they want to work on an agreement with the fields in general and just tell them, like, we're, we're willing to talk, talk about all this, let's figure it out. And then, I mean, even a very rough sketch, but like how, how many six foot things, like, I mean, I guess in that back corner, if you have a couple across.
Yeah. And I, I mean, maybe you could take them down too when they don't have a match. Because I, I feel like, does it need to be there all the time?
But just to be clear, uh, I would, I would oppose it a hundred percent if they do anything to hurt a tree. So as long as it's on fencing and in the ground, no problem. But like along that back corner and stuff, yeah, no, no, no. So just to be clear about that.
How many does baseball have up on that field? Because we could always just make it like no more than baseball has or something to keep language simple.
Those are a little bit easier though, because they have that fence along the back. And if they're going to put them in the ground, I think that's okay because you can pull those up pretty easily.
Right.
And you can just put them out there whenever you have tournaments and things like that, but.
You also might not want to locate the signs such that they can be seen from a resident's backyard. You know, if I'm sitting on my deck, I don't want to see the sign. All right.
And they have.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they, they have reached out about updating the field use agreement. So kind of thinking that this would make sense to tie those in. I explained the board was interested in updating the field use agreement and that's something Bob is, is looking at and I'll look at it with Bob and.
Let's set up a meeting with them for the two of us and work through these issues. Doesn't seem insurmountable. Anything else on that? All right, moving on, Hepford Park going around the town today. So we've talked about purchasing a, a new playground for Hepford. The township was the recipient of a grant that Representative Kruger was instrumental in securing for us and we thank her for that. So we've obtained a quote to purchase the playground. The cost of the playground is $57,846. We've also received a quote for safety netting and the amount of $3,785. There's also a three bay swing set component that we can add on here. That's $5,661. So this is within our budget.
What was the budget, 142 or something like that?
The project as a whole was 148. And for the playground, we had 85,000. And then for the safety netting, we had 18,000. So altogether, that would put the playground and the netting at 103,000. And with the playground that was quoted, the swings and the netting, that would put you at about 67,292.
And then installation is estimated.
Thirty five.
We, we don't have an estimate yet for installation, but that balance could go towards installation. I'm hoping it would be less than that.
So we're under budget and then we can maybe use some money for, you know, the mulch or whatever we have to put down, like things like that. Yeah.
Yeah, there, and the repairs to the, the fencing.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think it sounds good and it was really important to Representative Kruger that we get this done quickly. And David noted that the playground place said there could be eight week lead time. So it sounds like we really need to get this ordered, like maybe authorize Dave to do that tomorrow.
I was going to do that tonight. But Dave, what's, what's the name of the company that we got the quote from, just so I can include them in the motion?
Burke Playground.
Okay. And then we'll come back later and talk about installation costs at another meeting. All right, so I will move to approve the purchase of the playground, the safety netting and the three bay swing set for a total cost of $67,292 from Burke Equipment.
Actually, Charles, do you, do you, is Recreation Resource, you know, the relationship between Recreation Resource and Burke?
Recreation Resource is a distributor for Burke Playgrounds.
Who would you, are we buying it from Burke or Recreation Resource? I think it's.
I want to say you're probably buying for Recreation.
I think so too.
Program.
All right, then I.
Yeah, so let's, let's switch it to Recreation Resource.
Recreation Resource in lieu of Burke. All right, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries seven zero, exciting, we're moving along and that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. We can move on to Public Safety Committee Report with Commissioner Knapp.
Thank you very much. President McKenzie, brief and happy report for us. Just two items on my agenda. The first is consideration of a request from Garden City Fire Company to use some of their volunteers who work in our Public Works Department and who have commercial driver's license to fill in as, as, as drivers during the day when the fire companies traditionally have a very tough time having drivers come to respond to calls. I believe this is just a simple approval request, but I didn't know, Dave, if there's anything more from Pat or if there's any discussion on the board. All right. Looking at Dave and, and shrugging and saying no, I think, just an approval motion. Yep.
I guess I'm just curious how often these calls happen and is it going to interrupt kind of the workflow of our Public Works Department?
Oh boy, we could get you the, to go back to the last fire committee meeting and, and get you the, the call spreadsheet.
I think the reality, right, is that this needs to happen because if there's slow response time, I mean, we need the fire company to be responsive. So right now with a lack of drivers, this sort of needs to happen now. And then if it becomes a big problem, we deal with it, then.
I would, I would expect a couple of a day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like one.
South media has.
I mean, you, you get a lot of.
Bigger problems with getting, getting a driver out and have, has fewer drivers.
I, I think they would, I think they would pay attention, you know, like, for example, if it's a call for a gas alarm, you know, sometimes the fire marshal or a fire chief can get there right away and determine, you know, this is a false alarm and they can call people back. So, you know, they, they may not have to go all the way to the station and change and, you know, they might be able to stop them, but. Yeah, I, I think there, there would be some impact to the daily operations of the Public Works Department. You know, one of the things David suggested was, you know, don't have these two workers doing anything critical that they can't stop in the middle of the day. But, you know, I think there's some, obviously, the union was very supportive of this and, you know, they understand this, this will be an impact to operations and as was our Public Works Director, but.
I'm just trying to think during leaf and snow season. Yeah, well, I'm trying to think of which one of our trucks are CDL raised to the level requiring a CDL at a public works. Yeah. So it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't like, it wouldn't be a big impact. We wouldn't have to pull one of a few, well, not that we have a huge force department anyway, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like we'd be pulling one of a very small number of, of drivers during a snowstorm or a, during leaf season when they're really busy.
So I, I think this is, this is a good idea and we need to do this. I also think it's a bit of a temporary measure and maybe long term, reach out to our neighbors, neighboring municipalities and perhaps there's a way to share a paid driver. I mean, I know that, that's a cost, but I kind of see this as a temporary measure, even the public works employees.
Well, there's a different kind, oh, whoa, there's a different kind of cost that I think could be an opportunity that the union might get excited about, which is if, if these two are volunteers with their CDLs, then maybe there's other public works folks who could begin to work towards their CDL. And then that's something that maybe next year we budget and think about as a way to kind of help them progress in their own profession. That doesn't leave the public works as shorthanded as they might otherwise be. And then Daryl just has to get as creative with the scheduling, as it sounds like Chief Splain sometimes does with the, the police department in terms of who's paired up to do what. Because I think the snow and the leaf seasons, the fall and the winter are a little bit, that could, we could run into some issues there. So that's all, just a, I, I, I think there's a real opportunity for the township to support both the PWD and the, and the fire departments kind of simultaneously with thinking about ways in which we can make strategic investments. Our public works drivers, all of our full-time public works drivers are CDL. You couldn't have cut me off sooner than, just saying.
But for future, yeah.
Yeah. And maybe they can get the volunteer firefight, nevermind.
Yeah, and, and long-term, to piggyback Matt's and not to stretch this out, it's an issue that we all are familiar with. The long-term arc of, of emergency services is that somebody's going to have to be paid. And the first domino to fall is the drivers. And I believe that the fire companies submitted that grant this year or last year. Same grant that Swathmore received for a period of years to pay for all or portion of, of a driver. But long-term planning, as we all know, going to have to pay for, and we should probably pay, we should pay for our fire services. All right, so I will move to approve the request from the Garden City Fire Company to allow their use of their members who are employees of our Public Works Department to leave work to respond to emergencies when necessary.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, no Grinches. Second item is the approval of the 2022 to the 2000, to 2026 Union Contract for our Police Department. And that was signed this morning by the, by the FOP reps for the, for the department. And council has indicated that all is in order. So I think we will, without delaying any longer, so we can get ink to paper and have this thing finalized. I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding. Let me get the exact wording of, because I'm not going to read the whole document. Oh, you do? Great. All right, so it's a memorandum, I'm sorry, memorandum, memorandum of agreement, not an MOU, it's an MOA. Modifications to be included, the collective bargaining agreement that commenced on January 1, 2022. And I won't, yeah, maybe I'll go through the first part of it. I won't read all the details, but that is public record. Whereas the Delaware County Lodge, the, I actually don't even need to read that. I have that. Delaware County Lodge 27 of the FOP and the Commissioners and other Providence have engaged in collective bargaining sessions pursuant to binding Arbitration Act of 1968. On the date set forth below, reached an agreement regarding the terms of the collective bargaining agreement for a five-year term commencing on January 1, 2022 and continuing thereafter until a new agreement or award is reached. Whereas the Binding Arbitration Act of 1968, provide settlements entered into as a result of collective bargaining shall be reduced to written agreement. Now therefore, the township has set forth the terms of the agreements reached between the parties. And I don't think I need to go into that in detail. It's five years. It's a good deal for our officers of department and for the residents and it gives us good, some, some stability. So with that, I will move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the FOP. The five-year contract from 2022 to 2020. What did you say, six? Is that five years? That would be five years. Can I get a second? All right, president has seconded, all those in favor, what, I mean, pause, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven zero and that concludes my report. Over to you.
Could I revisit the public works issue real quickly? Dave and I were just discussing and I think it probably be best if we do a quick memorandum of understanding on that issue. Just making it clear that they're going to be entitled to, you know, leave work for calls in township only and fire only, not medical calls.
So should I authorize the signing of?
Yeah. Well, what we'll do, well, what I, what I'll propose is that we just tell them that it is approved, that you're proven in theory pending approval of an MOU at the next meeting.
Perfect.
That way, you know, you'll have some, you know, something official and right.
And with that clarification, I don't think we need to retract any of the votes.
Right, agreed. I think you can just, as long as you're on that, on board with that understanding, we'll have that for your next meeting.
Perfect. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? All right, over to you, President McKenzie, thank you.
Thanks. So for the Finance and Administration Committee Report, just two quick items. The first is a camera for the meeting room. As the Commissioners probably see right across the room here, we have an old camera and to zoom in to us or if Charles or Police Chief are speaking or public comment, someone has to manually change the camera and zoom in. And so currently that's sort of an issue and requires additional manpower if we want that to happen. It's also just an older camera, 15 years old. So Dave priced it out, the cost of a new camera will be $4,080.91. That includes installation and training. He'll be able to, to control the new one from where he's sitting over there so he can zoom and change the angle and those things. And it'll just be better quality, high definition and all that. And so I know that Marty probably loves this. And so I think it's a, a much needed update for the township building. And so do I need to make a motion to approve the purchase of it? Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a camera for the township meeting room at the cost of $4,080.91. Who are we purchasing that from? Do we have the vendor in there? From GoTo Technologies. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Only that with an HD camera, we're all going to have to start wearing makeup or we're going to look really bad on TV.
All in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries seven zero and the next item is really just informational. Dave and I have been talking about a lot of the different things we have going on. Alright, now motion carries seven zero. And the next item is really just informational. Um, Dave and I have been talking about a lot of the different things we have going on in terms of, you know, large dollar projects. So we have, we do um, our, our accountant sort of working through the details, but we think we have a good fund balance at, at the end of uh, 2021. And we have ARPA money and the, the question is uh, what's the most responsible use of those things? And we need to get moving so that residents can enjoy these funds instead of them just sort of sitting. Um, and so we're proposing a meeting for April 21st, um, just to walk through those issues. So I think the points would be the different revenue sources, which are the fund balance and the um, the ARPA money, uh, going through the different recommendations Charles had made with respect to MS4 funds for the um, you know, use of the ARPA funds. And at that time, I think it's a good idea to roll in the um, the road resurfacing that we talked about and really come up with a long-term plan there that makes sense. And, and also considering the work that needs to be done to the public works yard. It would be great if we can get a grant to cover that, but I think we need to be really thinking about what we're going to do there. Um, it sounds like an immediate attention situation. So anyway, hopefully everyone block off April 21st. If, if for some reason you can't make it, can you send me and Dave a note? And then if, you know, if that becomes an issue, maybe we'll have to pick another date. But I believe that's a Thursday, which has been advertised. So, you know, it would be good to do it pretty soon and on a date that we've already advertised. Um, and that is it for me. I'll pass it to community health and environment report with Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you, President McKenzie. The Chester Ridley Crumb Watersheds Association is seeking enthusiastic volunteers for its 24th annual CRC Streams Cleanup on March 26, 22, from nine to 11:30 at more than 30 sites through the local watersheds in Delaware and Chester Counties. There are two sites in here, in Another Providence, Lieber Park and Smedley Park. Please consider signing up and tell others about it.
If I could just add one thing real quick, uh, just prior to the meeting, uh, we got an email request from uh, CRC Watersheds asking if the township would be willing to sponsor the uh, spring cleanup. Uh, they sent me the sponsorship opportunities uh, here. So just want to put that out to the board to see if there would be interested, if there's any interest in sponsorship, uh, that looks like you could. The, you can see up there, um, there is an other option and then the lowest is 500, then 750, 1500 and 2500.
Okay. I mean, is this, this is coming up soon, right? We need to decide tonight if we're doing this?
Probably.
I mean, I think it's a great cause and they do great work.
Yeah, since the event's on March 26th, I, maybe, maybe you could, no, actually you couldn't wait.
Yeah.
If you're too close.
I mean, we can decide this. What, what do people feel like is appropriate?
During? I don't know. I just got this just a little while ago. We do, each year we contribute uh, an annual amount. I think it's in the range of about $500. So this would be separate from that, you know, as part of our normal dues. And uh, CRC does in addition to the stream cleanups and a lot of the other educational things that they do, we rely on them for some of our MS4 educational components.
Well, we do like throughout the years, we've done small dollar things like this as they come along. Um, you know, if it becomes routine and a larger dollar, then we budget for it. But I think things like this, we just sort of do.
They're arguably providing a service also by cleaning up the streams in our town.
Well, so if we're already doing 500, I was, I was wavering between the top two. Maybe we do the 1500 and then, you know, with the other 5,000, it sort of gets us to hero status. Cause I do think that they provide a huge value for the township and it's a good thing to be doing. The, the $1,500 one? Alright, so do we need to? Yeah. Okay, so I will make a motion to uh, for the township of Another Providence to be a CRC watershed protector donor status, which is a $1,500 donation. Can I get a second? Any comments or questions?
Probably take that out of our community enhancement fund.
All in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries seven zero and then we can move on to infrastructure and public works committee with Commissioner O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Few items on the agenda here tonight, and we will start with the uh, the continuation, I guess, of what we've discussed for the last several meetings, which is the comprehensive road discussion or pro-road program discussion. Um, as we all know, this has kind of been spearheaded by Commissioner Cooper. And so if that's okay, I was going to turn this over again to Commissioner Cooper. We all appreciate your efforts on this, so.
Thank you. I take any opportunity I can to spend way too much time on spreadsheets, so I appreciate all of your uh, your enthusiasm for that. So the last meeting, uh, just as a reminder, we authorized Dave to look um, at a specific loan amount and get a quote. So I don't know if you'd like to pull that up and we can review that as board. And then I can run through some of the kind of updated mathematical assumptions that we were basing off of the kind of previous loan numbers. I think it was a pro forma document uh, inside of a folder. But the top line numbers were, yeah. Yeah, we were looking for the 500 and there's, I mean, the top line numbers, there's also a low interest rate. It's not quite as low as uh, the one we were looking at for the 750. But it's not so much different that it significantly changes some of that kind of baseline assumptions. Was it, I think 1.7 instead of 1.5? Off the top of my head, I think that was the ballpark. Um, but essentially what it does is when we had looked at the, you know, previous inflationary spikes in the seventies and eighties, and we said, well, if it's a similar average to those events, it'll be 36 to $38,000 in, you know, benefit, which is about enough for one road. And with this updated number, it becomes more like 34 to 36. So, you know, essentially the same thing, a couple of thousand dollars less of, you know, potential money management gains if you assume similar kind of inflationary periods. The other kind of uh, mathematical calculation that we looked at was what is the break even point? And for the kind of previous loan, we were thinking it would be 1.5. The break even point was uh, an average inflation over the life of the loan of 2.7. And with this updated interest rate of, you know, the 1.7, the break even point is 2.8. Uh, so kind of similar, you know, mathematical assumptions, you know, slightly uh, worse, but you know, it's a similar shape of decision, you know, it's just slightly altered um, mathematics. There was another loan uh, that we got a quote for as well, or I should say pro forma document as well, that we could consider uh, which is a higher interest rate, but a much more backloaded um, repayment scheme. So that's something that we could consider as well. If that's something that the board is uh, interested in, but they're essentially all five years, 500,000. It's just how you want to structure the loan repayments. My thoughts are I, I really like the lower interest rate. I think that's kind of where the money management kind of modest benefit comes from. Um, and I do want to say modest benefit. Um, really when, you know, Dave and I are kind of diving into these numbers, we're looking at all the different line items that potentially, you know, an aggregate add up to the, you know, three plus million dollars that we need to do at all of the poor and worse roads over the next seven years. This heavy lifting um, for this plan comes from light items of uh, slight uh, revenue increase spread out over seven years and uh, kind of repositioning of funds as they come off of other line items. The specific uh, benefit that you would get financially uh, from this loan and net revenue is modest. The benefit that you get is spreading the spending out more evenly over the kind of six years. So if we didn't do the loan, the kind of most uh, the heaviest year of spending would be the very last year uh, of the, the project. And it would be uh, you know, in the mid 700,000s and the, the first year would be only 300,000 with the loan. It kind of evens out the, the amount of spending that we do year over year, so that each year is kind of more closely approximated. And so the potential value in that is, I know there was concerns very early in the conversation, if we do a significant chunk of the roads all at once, then 20 years from now, a significant number of roads would potentially kind of need to be repaired all at once. And so we thought there would be some kind of structural value to the town, spreading the workout more evenly. And so the, the loan benefits that and spreading the workout. And there's a potential modest kind of money management benefit if you, if you want to think about it like that. And so ultimately I'd be in favor of the kind of more evenly spread five-year loan repayment plan that was at, I think it was 1.7. Uh, I think it was the other document. Yeah. Sorry, that's a. Sorry, okay, that's, that's the one, right. So I would be in favor. I certainly open uh, Florida to everyone else. And again, this is just one component that we would be considering today. The other line items that we would need to decide year over year are, you know, uh, what we set our taxation rate at. Uh, whether or not we want to include ARPA funding in this, certainly arguments for or against, and we'll, I'm sure discuss that more at our April meeting. As well as, you know, the potential to receive grants and the kind of big unknown here is the infrastructure plan, which I anticipate we'll be learning more about soon, given that we've transitioned from a continuing resolution just in the last few days to like a fully passed budget. And so we should be getting kind of more information on that shortly, but we don't have that information now. So I, I open the Florida, anyone else wants to comment?
Yeah, I think I would like to roll this into our April meeting. I don't think the township needs to borrow money for our roads, especially, you know, we are in a good position with our fund balance and with things going on in Russia, I'm worried that the oil prices are gonna outweigh any benefit to borrow money to pave additional roads right now.
I think rolling it into a, the ARPA discussion makes a lot of sense, especially in light of the fact that we have to deal with a public works garage. Which I know we're going to try to get a grant for that, but who knows what will happen there and we may need to talk about a loan for that as well.
Uh, just to comment on the timing of it, um, the Fed has signaled that they're going to raise interest rates this month. So these interest rates probably won't be available and it kind of changes the underlying assumption. So if we, if we continue to kick the can, it probably won't be an option, at least at this kind of mathematical current state that we're evaluating.
I mean, I'll just kind of support the fact that we go ahead and try and vote on this now. I, I think we've been talking a lot about it. I don't know. My gut tells me that if we continue to kick it down the road, not only on the interest rate side of things, but more on the, is this something that we think makes sense to help get us focusing on our roads? I, I hear there's always going to be other issues within the township. That's why we're here. But I'm still very much in favor of uh, of moving forward on this.
That's a question, at least on the oil, if I can. I guess what you said, Kate, um, because that's an, I think it's an interesting point. But I guess here's the question I would have is, do, I guess, we're assuming interest rates are going to be higher moving forward than they are today. But I guess on the oil, would we also assume the oil is going to be more expensive in the future than it is today? I don't, I don't, I don't know if anyone even wants to take a stab in the dark on that because we don't. I don't even know if the internet's going to work tomorrow. So, so, so um, I wake up every day, I'm happy with my internet. My water works now and I'm like, I appreciate things I didn't quite appreciate as much before, but anyway.
My understanding was that there was going to be a spike because of the issues in Russia, but honestly, I don't know. I mean, that's maybe a question for Charles, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we just, are we just, are we taking, are we like blindfolded, taking stabs in the dark almost maybe on?
Yeah, no, it's, I a hundred percent agree. The price of oil and what's going on in Russia, all it affects us. Dave and I had discussed with uh, Charles, how kind of stable the price of oil is. Certainly the price of oil has fluctuated. I think we're in a unique situation with the price of oil now, for all the reasons you, you discussed. But we had a document that looked at the price of oil over the last several, or I should say the, yeah, I think it was like the price of asphalt. Didn't we get a kind of year-over-year review from Charles?
Oh yes, we, we did obtain that and that was uh, that showed that the price of asphalt tended to be cheaper early in the year. And as the year progressed, it got more expensive. And then we were also looking at the uh, on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Consumer Price Index for oil. Cause we were trying to see where that was in relation to recent years.
Certainly, I mean, certainly there's a lot of moving parts. I mean, you know, you can consider the potential money management of it, you know, a, a push because of how many variables are potential benefit, you know, probably not drawback, but in any case would probably be modest if anything. The value, I think, just comes from really spreading out the, the cost over the years and it probably would pay for itself. I think we've heard from all the commissioners except Shayna and uh, and Micah. I'm curious if you guys have any thoughts?
I'm also still in favor of pushing through with it. I'm sure the interest rates are going to go up and it's just a very I don't know, I, I really believe that this is a good thing to put support behind.
Yeah, I haven't changed, I haven't changed my position on it either. Maybe because West Possum Hollow, every day driving over at Aqua, they got to get and replace that main. It's just uh, reminds me every day. I get it, the, the more uncertainty now for sure, both in oil and in inflation and actually three and, and, and interest rates. But I think we could plan for it, get started now and, and budget it in next year. I think it's a modest, relatively modest loan for something that again, that, that feels past time to try to get ahead of.
Alright, then so it seems like a straw poll. There's a majority of commissioners kind of in favor of moving forward. Um, so can we pull up the pro formas then, so I can quote specific numbers in a motion?
Is it this one?
That's the one that I have interest in, the kind of for commissioners that are interested in moving forward. Do you concur? Have other thoughts?
And just a reminder that the interest rate that's here was as of uh, the last meeting or, and it will change until everything's locked in. So just, just as long as everyone understands, it's not going to stay.
Certainly, these numbers aren't set in stone. This is kind of their estimate that as things existed a week and a half ago and we reviewed it. That's what we're talking about, Rob.
I, I just, I kind of feel like we're now sort of committing our ARPA money tonight, if this goes forward without the commissioners even having.
I don't feel like we're committing the ARPA money at all. The, the assumptions in the plan was just a way to get to 3.5 million. We only need 3.1 million to do the roads and the ARPA is the smallest part of that. It's 200,000. So we could totally exclude ARPA from this and still have it fully funded through tax revenue, uh, grants. You know, completion of other line item budgets that we then kind of shift money to. Right. Yep. A hundred percent agree. I, I only included ARPA because it was a line item that was suggested as a possible funding mechanism, but I, I agree, it's not my preference to use ARPA for this. And I think we could fund th- this plan without assent of ARPA money if we decided to.
Well, and I mean, I, I also think there's an assumption built in around liquid fuels that uh, you were, in your documents here have been fairly conservative on liquid fuels.
Yeah. Were we on the Montgomery McCracken line item for the FOP negotiations for 22? Not good. Well, that disappears in the next four.
Okay, uh, so I move uh, that the Board of Commissioners uh, authorize Dave uh, to pursue. to pursue a loan of $500,000, spread out over five years, as roughly estimated by this pro forma document that he received two weeks ago. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please vote by saying nay.
Nay.
I think the motion passes four to three. Did I get that math correct? Okay.
It's the last time we got a four, three.
It's the first one for the two years I've been here.
I think it's 2017, maybe. Probably speed bumps. Yeah.
Well, hey, thank, thank you. And I just wanted, for the record, I'll just indicate that despite the fact I voted against this, I, I wholeheartedly appreciate all your hard efforts, Commissioner Cooper and, and everyone else who helped you with that. So anything else on that?
No, I just want to say thanks and I appreciate it and I continue to trust all of your judgment. And this is kind of a subtle point. I, I think as Kate said it, it, you know, she didn't hate the idea, but you know, it's not her ideal. And I think we can live with it moving forward and, you know, I look forward to improving the roads in the town with this.
We know at least four of us will be getting roads paved in the woods.
I was not going to say that, but.
Apparently three of us won't be, but anyway.
I did hear a lot of talk about five and six, so.
All right, so with that said, so, okay, next item on the agenda here tonight is Public Works Garage. And apparently the, we have some structural issues with the mechanic bay. The two bay wing of the Public Works Garage is in poor condition. There are major structural issues in the opinion of Bob Lynn and our engineer. Charles Catania, it's not worth repairing. Therefore, it's, it's recommended that we tear down the existing wing and build a new one. The rest of the building is in good shape. It's estimated that the cost would be, of this project would run about $300,000, which would include about 25,000 for design and permitting and bidding. Mr. Lynn's office indicated to us that they could provide that service to us. And therefore it's been recommended that we, I guess, I guess recommendation would be that we authorize Lynn Architects to begin the drawings and then figure out the best funding source for the project. So I understand too, that this project could lend itself well to a loan as we can spread it out, spread the cost out over the lifetime of the project. So with that said, any comments or discussion?
Just, are there, are there any safety concerns right now? Like immediate safety concerns?
This is immediate.
I mean, like, so.
They need this danger to.
Yes, the answer is yes. They need to do some immediate temporary stabilization to, to, to eliminate those safety concerns.
I mean, is, is the wall falling over? Is the roof collapsing? All of the above? Like, should we move vehicles and equipment out of the structure?
There's some serious damage to the bottom of the wall, walls, plural.
It's hard to tell in the picture there, but it kind of goes in and out, like it's sort of bowed. You can see some serious damage here. Charles and, I don't put words in Charles' mouth, but, and Bob Lynn seemed to think that if you tore out the wall a little bit, you would see a lot of structural damage in there. I think what Bob Lynn, as a building code official was looking at it, he was concerned about some of the structural walls for the building. He, he seemed, seemed to think that it was probably not something you want to sit on too long.
Some, I, in conversations I've had with folks, it sounds like there was concern that this wasn't up to code. Was it built incorrectly? If it was built incorrectly, is there money that we can get back from the builder for?
Twelve years, you've been saying it twelve years.
And just sort of to Max's point, I mean, equipment, other things, even if we go to rebuild something, it's going to take some time. Or what do we need to, are there other factors cost wise that we need to think about to, you know, temporarily make sure that things are safe?
I guess to follow up, what, what equipment is in there?
Yeah.
It's the mechanic.
It's mechanic shop.
Yeah.
So when I looked at it, excuse me, that's what I had recommended to Bob Lynn, take a look at it to see whether, you know, whether he felt it could be salvaged or whether we need to, just needed to start over. And one of the things to ask and look at would be, you know, we need to build some kind of temporary stabilization, whether it's a temporary wall or temporary supports to, to, to maintain the integrity of the structure on, under the short term. And that, that work, I believe, can be done by the Public Works Department. And then I guess Dave had a conversation follow up. Dave, you can talk about that, about where to rebuild where it is, whether we look at another location on the site or whatever, you can discuss that part of it.
Yeah, those, those would be some of the considerations that would go into the coming up with the drawings and determining if where it is right now is the best spot for it, or if there's somewhere else on the, the site that it could work out. And that would be something we would discuss with our Public Works Director and the main mechanic that works in that area. Because that, that is probably the most heavily used part of the Public Works Garage, because our mechanic is in there so frequently.
Well, it's just, I mean, it sounds like everyone's concern here is just safety. So let's, let's bid this out and let's just make sure, you know, Charles and Daryl and everybody, Bob Lynn are making sure everybody's safe, whatever they need to do.
Since we included this on the, the first item, the, the kind of grant that we applied for, do we know the timeline of when we'll hear about this? As far as like bidding it out and all that kind of stuff, I'm just trying to figure out like funding decisions?
I don't. I'd have to check and see. It seems like typically they have about a six to seven month turnaround. But I think it, it, it can vary. In, in past Commonwealth Finance Authority slash DCD grants, that's about what the timeline has been, but.
Theoretically, I think they'd reimburse, like if we took a loan out to finance, repair, build, would that grant be able to pay off the loan? Would it be able to reimburse expenses already accrued? Like, I guess I'm trying to think about like, what happens if we get this awkward situation where they give us the money, but then they're not letting us use it to pay off the actual, like a loan that we took or something like, what, what kind of like weird sticks could we get in?
Yeah. Typically with grant agreements, they won't reimburse you for any work that happens before the date of the contract. I don't know if we could make an argument, this is a bit of an emergency use.
I mean, it's always worth asking, right?
Exception.
Yeah, it's always worth asking.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine asking for the money. I'm just trying to think the next step ahead.
Yeah, I, I, my recommendation is I probably wouldn't let that deter you from taking any action on this. Like, I don't think we would want to wait six or seven months to see if we get the grant and only to find out we only get partially funded or something like that.
All right, so it sounds like Robert made a motion to approve those, the 25,000 for the design.
So I would move that we authorize the expenditure of the $25,000 for design permitting and bidding for Bob Lynn's office. Do I have a second? We moved in second. Did any further discussion, questions or comments? And hearing none, all in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It looks like the motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the East Possum Hollow sidewalk. The project is to begin the week of the 21st of March. When that happens, there'll be a one-way detour in which traffic will only be able to travel eastbound towards the railroad station. The township has been coordinating with Wes and with school transportation as well on this matter. So that's just for informational purposes and if there's any discussion, we can have that. And if not, we can just move right on. So with that said, the next item on the agenda here this evening is the East Rose Valley Road Sidewalk. And work is to begin on that in April. Premier contract, contracting is our low bidder. Project is again expected to begin in the middle of April. We do need a timeline extension, however, due to the extremely protracted pen dot review process that occurred during 2021. And at the same time, we're also awaiting DCD's confirmation that the time extension will be granted.
Just, just a quick update on that. In between when the, I provided this information and, and the meeting, we did find out that the amendment was approved by the DCD. So we should have the board, I'd, I'd suggest the board make a motion to accept the DCD's amendment to extend the agreement through June 30th of 2023. Now, that's, that extension is just for the contract agreement. It's not delaying the work any further. Because our current agreement is set to expire at the end of this June, which would not be enough time to complete the sidewalk, which is expected to last into August.
Okay.
Sorry, you don't have, that's not all the motion. The motion.
No, yeah. I just want to circle back to the contractor after we move and.
Okay, so with that said, I'll make a motion then that we accept the DCD's amendment to, to grant an extension of time until June, is it?
Of 2023.
Of 2023, thank you so much. Do I have a second, please? It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? It looks like the motion carries unanimously seven to zero. And lastly, the never ending Phantom Boulevard Speed Hump Saga. And anyway, we've been able to, it looks like we're trying to schedule a meeting, I guess, now for the end of April. And I wrote, I guess Dave knows, and I'm sorry, you know, Kate, I should loop you in on more of my communication. I apologize.
You know how I love speaking.
Yeah.
She was the first.
So anyway, so, so anyway, so we'll, we'll see where this goes and hopefully we can have a meeting at the end of April and I'll continue to keep everyone updated. And with that said, I've taken enough time, so that ends my agenda. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thanks, Robert. Next to Building and Zoning Committee Report with Commissioner Mullin.
Thank you, President McKenzie. The, I have three items. The first one is another media walk escrow release, which.
Can I, can I cut you off here, Marty, real quick?
I love it when you do.
Before, before he gets too far into it. Charles had, had a couple of questions for them and as I understand it, it's not settled.
I would actually just delay it till the next meeting.
And the advice of our esteemed engineer, we will delay any escrow release until the next meeting. So that's great. Moving on to my other two items, which are both, well, yeah, informational. First one is that we have a zoning hearing board, meeting in March, coming up March 21st. We're going to be looking at three, three issues. The first one is a Beatty Road residential property that's going to be requesting a setback variance. We have a residential property on Glenwood that's seeking an impervious coverage variance for an addition. And a residential property on Spring Haven Road, seeking a setback variance and the enlargement of a pre-existing non-conforming struc, non-conforming structure. Join us on March 21st. And then amendment to, we've talked about this a number of times, the amendment to the R5B zoning. Solicitor Scott has prepared some warning, some wording to amend this issue. The current wording does not allow for townhomes in an area that primarily already has townhomes. So we, the Planning Commission is going to be reviewing that and getting back to us here at the board. Thank you Solicitor Scott for doing that and we look forward to hearing from the Planning Commission. That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullin. You just were like, on to the man.
Sorry, we're just having a side discussion.
Well, it's time for the manager's minute, so.
All right. Just announcement, the Citizens Against Trash, the CAT Club is going to be holding a cleanup this Saturday at 9:00 AM on Bullens. We've been very appreciative of the recent events that the CAT Club has done a number of cleanups in the township, so.
Are they meeting at the Bullens Park?
Yes.
Okay.
And just real, just, that's a, that's a, could be a potentially dangerous, you know, that's a dangerous cleanup compared to some of the ones they've done before.
We have traffic control, Public Works will, will be there for some traffic control. We, we have Public Works present at, at most, if not all of the events that they've held. Just informational here, PICO is going to be doing tree and power line work in areas of the township. Mentioned this at the last meeting, but just wanted to make people aware. Work will occur along Allen Street, Carlton, Dennis, Jeff, Jefferson, Lincoln. Some of these are in Media Borough, Emerald Street, Files, Forest Lane, Highland, Lake Avenue, Leper Street, Manchester, Moylan, Orchard, Pritchard, Radnor, Shepherd, Vernon, Longford Avenue, Walker and Washington Avenue. Vegetation work is set to begin this month and will last through September of 2022. If you have any concerns about the work that PICO is doing, we do encourage you to reach out to PICO at 1-800-494-4000. We do occasionally get people who call us and ask us questions. We'll be happy to speak with you. But just a reminder that we have very limited control over, not even say limited, we have no control over the work that PICO is doing with this trimming, but we will be happy to try and assist. Delaware County has a childcare program. This Delco Childcare Support Program, it is meant to help people who have unexpected financial difficulties with early childhood education programs from the COVID-19 pandemic. There is the opportunity to get up to $40 per day per approved child. For information on how to apply, go to ccpnpa.org/COVIDsupport. And this is a good oper, so if you, if you're aware of anyone that is struggling with childcare during the COVID pandemic, this is a, a good opportunity for them. All right, the next item here is the, we received $29,795.16 through the DEP 904 Grant Program. This is put together by Mary Ann Lemey within our finance department. So a big thank you to Mary Ann. This was an increase over prior years by a couple of thousand dollars. And this is all through the tracking of the recycling collection throughout the township and commercial entities. So the more recycling that takes place, the higher this grant number can be. And these funds go towards offsetting the recycling program. Septa Route 101 and 102 will be having outages in the coming weeks. These outages will impact the station along Beatty Road. So March 26th, March 27th and April 30th through May 1st, Septa Shuttle buses will, will replace all Route 101 and 102 trolleys between the 69th Street Transportation Center and the Media, Orange Street and Sharon Hill stations. So please budget an extra 15 minutes to get back and forth between your locations due to this outage. The Delaware County is holding a job fair this weekend at the 911 Center on Middletown Road in Media. They have a number of full-time positions open, including the Correctional Facility, Bureau of Elections, County Courthouse, Park Police, Sheriff's Department, to name a few, and, and the Health Department, of course. So this will be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday, March 12th and 13th. Bring your resume. There are many positions open. The county has discontinued the Igloo Recycling Program. This is the Igloo that we have at the Public Works Garage where you can drop off single stream recycling. It actually does get a fair amount of use, told from our Public Works Department, there are a couple of regulars that come each week and, and use it. So that the county has determined that the program was, was not worth continuing. They may bring it back. In the meantime, we are going to see if there's another way that we can bring in our own Igloo, possibly from our recycling company or some other company. But in the meantime, that will be taken away.
Do we know why people are doing that instead of putting it out at the end of their driveway?
I don't. Could be something, the HOAs provide recycling in some of the communities, but it might be a little bit harder. It might sometimes be easier just to throw it in the car and bring it up. I'm not sure, to be honest. Sometimes if they have more than what fits in the 65 gallon toter. Although, of course, the recycling company will stay, still take things that are next to the, as long as it's marketed recycling.
Could be a lot of packages around the holidays.
Well, can we, can we have Daryl, like ask the repeat people, if, you know, if they notice, just ask them why they're doing that. I guess I'm just curious.
Our, our cardboard recycling is, is going to remain, that is, that is handled separately with a company that we use from Philadelphia. So obviously all the Amazon boxes take up a lot of, a lot of space in recycling. So, so that option will still be there. So obviously, all the Amazon boxes take up a lot of, a lot of space in recycling. So, so that option will still be there.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna spend the resources and put things back, I just want to make sure there's, there's a good reason other than someone just likes the habit of outing themselves. All right, is that?
Yeah, just. Yeah, last, last thing on the report is summer camp registration has begun or will be beginning on March 21st. It'll be the same as in past years at Nether Providence Elementary. It will be from June 27th through July 28th, with the exception of camp on July 4th. 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, for kindergarten through sixth grade. The camp fee is $295 and that covers all five weeks. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. That is it for the meeting on, of the Board of Commissioners of Nether Providence for March 10th. Our next meeting is March 24th.